Good morning, everybody. It is 10:00 a.m. on Tuesday, August 4th, 2020, and this is a meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors. We're originating, it's originating for the administration building. However, supervisors are calling in remotely today because we do not have water in our administration building this morning because of the ongoing construction downtown Nevada. So we are providing our public access by Zoom, and we're not holding a meeting in person, as I said before, but also because we're, we have been traditionally now providing our public access via Zoom because of the COVID-19 pandemic. So I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda for today.
I so move.
Second.
Motion, Olson, second by Heddins. Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Agenda is approved. Next, we will do any updates on the COVID-19 situation. Do any staff have updates? Hearing none. Are there any updates from the supervisors?
The only thing I have for an update is I looked at the COVID site. I haven't looked at the calculations compared to yesterday. It does show that statewide, there is 885 deaths. So I think that's about five or six more from yesterday, but I'd have to look back at our numbers. And Story County unfortunately had one additional death, so we're at 14 now. But I'm not sure if 10 o'clock anymore is the time that they do the final updating of numbers. I also looked at hospitalizations for Story County. It says four, but it also says that's dated as of July 30th. So they are, what, four or five days behind on that.
I think they're updating 11, and there's other things that are not updating anymore that they used to be, like they used to update the statewide daily increases, and they haven't updated that chart for a while. So it's getting a little more difficult to do that. But thank you for those numbers. Any other updates on the COVID-19 situation? Hearing none. We'll go to public comment number one, and this comment period is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. And are there any members of the public who have anything that they would like to comment on?
Make sure you unmute yourself if so.
Yes, thank you for the reminder. Please unmute yourself if you do. You can also raise your hand. And I don't think I see any hands raised. Give it just another few seconds.
And no one has texted in.
No one on text. Okay, thank you, Laura. Then I will close the public comment period number one, and we will go on to the bid opening for Hickory Grove Park Road Resurfacing. And Mike Cox, good morning, Mike.
Can't hear Mike. Are you unmuted, Mike? Yeah, cannot hear Mike at all.
What was that?
There you go.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I thought you were just opening everything and weren't talking. I didn't see you talking. So thanks, Lisa.
So the first, the first bid was from Manats. The bid bond is complete on that attached, and the bid amount is $206,367.12. So 206,367.12. The second bid is from Inroads LLC out of Des Moines. Bid bond is attached. And the bid amount is $220,948.88. And those are the only bids we received. We will review bids and come back with a recommendation for award.
All right, any questions for Mike?
None for me.
None for me.
None here either. Thank you very much, Mike. Did somebody say something there?
Can't hear.
Can't hear you. I'm...
I was wondering if I could hear the first bid total again, please.
Mike, did you do that?
Yeah, can you hear me?
I can, thanks.
Yes, yes.
First bid amount was $206,367.12.
Okay. Sorry about that, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Thank you, everybody. We will then move on to item nine, discussion and consideration of items brought before the board with requests for immediate action. I have not heard of any. Are there any, are there any items here?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not that I am aware of either.
Okay, anybody else hearing none? Then we'll go into item 10, 2020 insurance review. We have Steve Goodhue and company here, so...
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Laura, good morning, Lisa. Thank you Supervisor Merkin. And thank you for placing us on the agenda this morning. And I'm joined this morning by Andrew Rickles and Susan Haas, who's in my background. Appreciate the opportunity to talk a little bit about your insurance renewal. This is a very good renewal, as you'll see as we go through this PowerPoint this morning. We want to start by talking about a few trends, really positive trends, and then we'll kind of wrap up with some coverage summaries and the premium summary as well. And I believe Leanne is going to drive for us this morning. Thank you, Leanne, very much appreciate that. So it will take just about 10 minutes or so to do this. And Leanne, if you could go to the next slide. I'm going to turn to Andrew Rickles and let him go through the next few charts here.
Perfect. Everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. All right, first slide here is just your number of paid work comp claims. We've got a great trend going on here, as you'll notice, for 1920. We dropped from 21 claims the last two years to just 13 paid claims this past year. Now, again, COVID had a little bit to do with that, but definitely not all of it. So kudos to Todd and his team, everything they're doing. Again, the number of claims are down, which in turn, you can flip the page, Leanne. The number of losses are way lower as well. Total pay this past year was $16,897 on work comp, very similar to 1819, but down greatly from 15, 16, 16, 17, and 17, 18. So again, overall, work comp claims are down. As you all know, this affects your premiums. Your experience mod is all based off of your claims history. So here's your claims, here's your experience mod. It's going from a .76 to a .72 this year. And I will tell you, next year, your mod is going to go down again. I project it to be right about 0.68, so about a 4% drop next year based off your claims this past year. And again, this mod history is excellent. You're getting, right now as it sits, you're getting a 28, sorry, 28% credit off of state rates just based off your claims history. I don't know where it ranks with the rest of the counties in the state, but I can guarantee you it's probably in the top five, if not one of the top. So kudos to the team, kudos to everyone there. Your claims history is outstanding from a work comp standpoint. Go ahead and flip the page. Last page here is just a summary of your non-work comp claims. Again, this goes back five years. You'll notice real quick, I want to point out in the property section there, most of that 383 was the hail damage, the Justice Center, back in 2018. So again, just a quick snapshot of where your claims sit minus work comp. Nothing to be concerned about here as well. But again, kudos to Todd and his team for everything they've done from a safety standpoint, because your claims history on the work comp has been outstanding this last year, two years. Steve, go ahead and maybe jump into some of the coverages.
Next slide, please, Leanne, thank you. I'll pick up on a coverage review here, and we just did kind of a snapshot with going through a lot of detail, but you'll see that you've got about $68.6 million of property and equipment insured, subject to a $50,000 deductible on property and $10,000 on equipment. And you may recall that we increased the deductible from $10,000 to $50,000 on property. And when we get to the very last slide, I'll show you the benefit of that. There was a pretty significant, about a $26,000 or $28,000 premium reduction when we did that. And I think a good move and a good place to have that deductible. You've got $2 million of general liability, auto liability, law enforcement, public officials, and then $13 million of excess liabilities. So your excess liability will cover over any of those previously mentioned coverages, general liability, auto, and others. $10,000 of crime coverage, that's for employee dishonesty, any fraud, forgery, things of that nature. And then we did add some flood coverage at last year's renewal, $2 million of flood coverage, subject to 2% of loss deductible. If you go to the next page, Leanne, here's a breakdown of your property. I thought you might find interest in that. You've got $54.5 million of property. It's a significant amount. Always want to make sure we have this properly insured and structured. We did a meeting previous to this with Alyssa and Todd, as we do every year, and go through everything in great detail to make certain we've got proper structures and proper values. You've got just under 6 million of personal property. Personal property, just reminders, contents, that's furniture, fixtures, equipment, things of that nature in each and all of your buildings. 313,000 of computers and equipment. As you'll see, there are about 6.7 million of scheduled equipment, graders and things of that nature, a lot of heavy equipment. And then 651,000 of what we call unscheduled equipment. Those are things in the sheriff's office, those are fine arts, things perhaps on the lawn out front at the county administration building. And again, 651,000 there. And there's your 68.6 million of total insured value. And we just put a footnote in there just to show you in comparison what it was like compared to last year. It's about a $1.4 million increase or 2%. Most carriers, including ICAP, will take values up about 2% a year just to account for inflation, and that's what they did here. Next slide, here's just, we're not going to go through much detail here, but I thought you might find interest in the work comp payroll that we submit. It's very similar to expiring premiums, 17.1 versus 17.2. And Alyssa does a great job of representing this to IMWCA. These figures are audited at the end of each year, and typically, we're within a few thousand dollars of what we projected and what's, what actual payrolls may be. And of course, if you overestimate, you get premium back. If you underestimate, there's a little bit of premium due, but it's normally within a few thousand dollars. So I thought you might find some interest in that. And then the last slide, and I know we're moving quickly here, but we'll stop when we get to the end and take some questions. Here's your premium summary, and we put three years of history there. I mentioned the increase in property deductible to 50,000. You'll see the benefit of that back from '18 to '19. You'll see that your ICAP package premium was 274, and it decreased to 244. That was a function of taking a higher property deductible at the time. And ICAP took a little bit of rate this year from 244 to 257. You also had a few claims that were paid out last year, but as we looked at and analyzed, we thought was a fair renewal, and that was reduced even, that 257 was reduced by just under 25,000, as you'll see in the footnote. Your IMWCA, which is your work comp premium, went down $29,000. That's a function of state rates. It's a function, as Andrew mentioned, of your terrific mod rate, and that number will continue to go down as your mod goes down. And you'll see what that number starts at. It starts at 406,000, and it gets reduced through a number of things by 280,000, by your experience mod, by your longevity, the time you've been with IMWCA, loss experience credits, good experience bonus. These are terrific work comp rates. We couldn't touch these rates with other carriers. And IMWCA, we believe, does a really, really nice job with loss control, with managing claims. And again, as you can see here with the renewal, total premium 384. We're down about $15,000 year over year. And we think it was, as you look back and compare it to 1819, it's really a good review, even compared to 1920, a really, really good review, a good renewal, excuse me. Last page, I'll just mention this quickly, just as we got together with Todd and Alyssa, we talked about what have we done, what have we worked on over the past several years with this relationship? And I just want to remind you, we did market out the property to EMC and Cincinnati Insurance last year. Premiums were considerably higher, so we kept it with ICAP and of course, took a higher deductible. We looked at some higher property deductible, there's the higher property deductible reference. We looked at auto and general liability rates. They were very competitive at the time. Looked at work comp rates, as I just mentioned, which are highly competitive. And there's your average nine-year loss ratio of 38%, which is really good. And that results in a better experience mod, as you saw on the prior chart. And then several things we're doing with Todd and of course, the Safety Committee on Loss Control. Back in 2017, tour properties, we continue to review loss reports and look for places to mitigate risk. And just really appreciate the opportunity to work with Todd and the Safety Committee, and Alyssa, of course, and all of the county staff. So with that, we'll stop and take any questions that supervisors may have.
I have no questions, thank you. I always like how you lay out the report, and it's very clear to us. And thank you to all the staff for continuing to be so safety conscious and conscious about, conscious how they take care of all of our equipment and our properties.
Thank you, Laura.
Yeah, and I have no questions either. I appreciate how you've laid out the presentation and just all the detail that you've put in into it. Makes it very easy to follow, and particularly like the historical information and show the trends that we have and the work that we are doing to make sure that we do have a safe environment for employees to work in.
Thank you, Lisa.
And I'll just add my thanks and just say the really good news of this. I mean, it's good news that our premiums are down. The really good news is that it means employers are safer. So that's, so, and we thank you for your help when doing that.
Thank you, Lyndon. Thank you again for the relationship. We really enjoy working with the county staff and appreciate the relationship with each and every one of you as well. Thanks for that.
Enjoy working with you as well, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good meeting.
We'll go on then to agency reports, and we have Brenda Dreyer on the line here. Good morning, Brenda.
Good morning, Supervisor Merkin, and Heddins, and Olson. I'm joined this morning, Dan's on the line as well. I submitted our report for both outreach services as well as workforce. I'd welcome any questions you might have, comments related to either report. I could certainly go through those as well, if you desire that we do that.
Maybe just a brief recap would be good.
Leanne, would you pull our three slides, please? So what I've done in the report is really to give you kind of a glimpse of some of the more economic development, community development activity going on around the county in our rural communities under the population of 2,000. So I'm pleased to support that, or report that, a lot of the projects continue to move forward. We're seeing some strong housing sales on all four corners, and I've highlighted really Collins. Like I said, great progress on the pool up in Roland. Then we've got a new commercial building done. So a lot of, lot of great things going on, and we'll continue to update you all, so you have a sense of what's going on. The other thing that we have found out in the last couple of weeks is a new program that I think will be valuable and a great complement to some of the programs that the Board of Supervisors has for our rural communities. It's a program of ITC Midwest, which is a transmission, electric transmission company at the Iowa Rural Development Council. And it allows our rural communities to actually get some additional funding support for capacity building, strategic planning, and any studies or assessments. So again, a great complement to the technical services program that the county has available to support that. So we are rolling that out and providing that information to the communities during our visits. So that's a little bit on outreach. Leanne, if you move to workforce.
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Laura.
So in Collins, the new housing construction, are those infill lots? Or is someone actually trying to do a small subdivision down there?
So, great, great question, Laura. So Collins really has had a great amount of success in being able to take a look at their infill lots and be able to wrestle that property away. So they're kind of small lots. They're smaller homes, but they're selling, and they're certainly meeting an important niche. So, but yeah, infill, which is great. It allows folks to be a good steward of the existing infrastructure. And very quickly, they're running out of infill lots. So during my last visit, we had a really strategic discussion about where could we possibly be looking for some additional land for housing? But it is really infill, and they should be applauded for those efforts. So any other questions on outreach?
Brenda, I just have one right along that same line. So what, what is the housing going for approximately?
You know, anywhere from 150 up to just shy of 200. So really, pretty strong, strong pricing. And even existing housing stock really is pretty strong in terms of... But I think all of us know that when we talk about 150 to 200, there's not that many places in the county where you hit that kind of sweet spot. So it's certainly meeting a need really for, for folks that, that it's really what I would consider affordable. And especially being new, it's not very, it's not a lot of square footage, but certainly it allows folks to go into a home with really no upkeep and not have to worry about replacing roofs and furnaces. And so, yeah, they should be plotted, applauded for their efforts to really get some new housing up and going.
Great, thank you.
Supervisor Heddins. Let's, anything else on outreach?
No.
I'll talk a little bit about workforce. And wow, has it been an interesting quarter as it relates to workforce. And I share these numbers regularly on the jurisdiction calls that we have every week where the supervisor's involved, but I think it's important for the public to understand really where we're at with unemployment. We're at 6.9%, which is the most recent number. That's still a lot of people unemployed. It's, it's not the lowest in the state. June is usually not a month where we have higher unemployment in straight counties. So 2.4% is really the highest we hit for the previous years. Usually that happens in June. We were close to 10% at one point in time, so we're trending in the right direction. But we have a lot of folks who'd like to get back to work. I'll talk a little bit about the countywide job board that again is, we're able to have a countywide job board because of the very generous support of this, our workforce initiatives. And I am so glad, I mean, it's one thing to have a job board in a tight labor market, but it has been a great tool that we've not had to build. We had it ready and available and strong usage on that already. But we've seen record high searches over the last month of over 4,500 searches a week. And it's a good week traditionally, if we have about 2,200 people searching work in Eames. So we have a lot of folks that are looking for work. We'd like to see that be even higher. We've seen our job postings last week go over 1,800 on Indeed and Work in Eames. So we combine those. The state has a record number of job listings. So again, we've got work available to folks. We know the discussions that are going on in the federal level regarding the unemployment compensation. But again, we need to be encouraging people to get on Work in Eames, look at the opportunities we have. We've been featuring immediate opportunities on our COVID resource pages. I share that regularly with workforce development, who shares it with job seekers. And we'll be continuing to intensify our digital marketing efforts to push out and remind folks that there's a lot of good jobs available. So that's where we're at, kind of with searches and trying to get people back to work. In a month, since the pandemic here, we, we had a Teaching for the Workforce event. It was virtual, we had great participation. We had 23 teachers from elementary clear up to high school and at-risk teachers. We had 20 different Story County businesses involved, and really the focus was on sharing the skills that were going to be needed to the workforce. We see very high remarks and are excited to be able to hopefully have that back in person sometime in 2021. And I'll end my workforce comments with just really a glimpse of see yourself in Eames. So we had a lot of discussion, do we proceed with an internship program in a virtual format? I'm so glad we did. We reached a very high number of interns. It was great to talk to interns that maybe weren't physically located in Story County but working for our Story County companies. So we reached over 230 interns. We had six very good speakers. We involved 34 different companies. We started a LinkedIn effort for the first time this year. Had strong response there, and it continues to grow post the series. And, and we had more than half attend two of the four events. So, you know, it's not been easy to adjust programming, but we're really trying to do what we can do to continue to push out programming and build the knowledge that this is really a great place to work for our young folks that may be interning with our companies. And with that, I take any workforce questions you might have. Dan, would you like to make some comments?
Absolutely, thank you, Brenda. Supervisors Merkin, Olson, and Heddins, we appreciate the partnership, and we're here to answer any questions. You know, I think, I know Laura sits on our executive board for the Economic Development Organization, and we continue to see good activity. We continue to see and hear a lot of good news from a lot of our existing businesses on opportunities to create, create more meaningful employment opportunities. So in a time where there's a lot of pessimism, we continue to be optimistic about things going forward. And the way you underwrite a portion of what we do makes us continue to remain optimistic about things going forward. So I'll stop there. If you've got questions for myself, I'm here to answer them.
So, yeah, good morning, Dan, also, and Brenda. Just a couple of things that are almost a little bit comment, too. The first one is, is... The first one is, is that I believe it was last week, my days are kind of crowding together here. But the board, the three of us did decide that we wanted to update our information about what's going on around 220th Street so that we could continue a discussion or about whether or not that would be a project for paving the future. So Dan, just letting you know that I'll be coming to you to ask for what specifics we can about what maybe happened in Prairie View, et cetera, you know, just as we update that. This is not going to be like next week, all right? But it is something that you should look at as we move into the fall. And then the other thing Brenda, I don't know if you know it or not, but I think it was three weeks ago, we, the three of us went ahead and did give approval to use some leftover money from asset funding of fiscal year 20 for HERDA to look at creating some kind of pilot for workforce transportation using HERDA. So those are just two things that you'll be discussing with boards in the future, you know, and I expect this fall that that's when that will start to come together. So wanted to let you know that we were trying to, you know, to, to continue to participate. Thanks.
Well, and let me know what I can do to be helpful with the employers as it relates around the HERDA workforce transportation. So we're glad to be helpful.
Good, you'll probably hear from Brooke Ramsey, who is with HERDA and kind of in charge of this. And don't expect that until probably late August. They all of a sudden a grant popped up that would be a benefit to all the entire HERDA region. And Brooke was scrambling, is scrambling, I believe even today to try and pull all some of that together. And then we have some questions related to some asset also. But yeah, so I'm excited for that though. But thanks Brenda, I'm always planned on having you part of the conversation.
No problem.
Supervisor Heddins, do you have any questions?
Okay. No, I don't. Thank you for the presentation though.
There is somebody on the line, phone number editing 7986 with a raised hand. If you're on, can you unmute yourself?
No, that was from before, it was me.
Okay. Thank you.
Again, we, I would reiterate again, we're so grateful for the support. And again, I can't imagine where we would be had we not made an investment together on that without having a countywide initiative on that job board. It's more important than ever to be able to create an opportunity for our folks to know what jobs we have available and make that connection easier for everybody. So I'm going to mute myself and I'll stay with you then for the rest of your meeting.
Good, thank you Brenda and thank you Dan.
Thank you.
We will go on to consideration of minutes. And Laura, did you have a correction to the minutes from the 728 meeting? You're muted.
You're muted.
Laura, can you unmute yourself?
I'm now unmuted?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, no matter how many meetings we do with this. Yes, so and I believe that, that Shelley, it's already been corrected, correct? Yes.
Yes, they've, it's been corrected.
And so the correction was just to add in the section where the minutes talked about our discussion on the DOT plans for Highway 30. The minute said that I reviewed feedback from the Nevada City Council. And actually we just put in input session there because it was not the council, it was the public input session. So we just added that phrase other than that. So I'd be happy to make a motion to approve as amended.
So moved. Or second, sorry.
We apparently can't do this remotely.
Motion by Olson, second by Heddins. If no further discussion, Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Minutes are approved. Let's go on to personnel actions then. I would entertain a motion to approve personnel actions as listed.
So moved by Heddins.
Second Olson.
Okay. Further discussion, hearing none? Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Personnel actions are approved and next we have claims. I would entertain a motion to approve claims as presented.
So moved by Olson.
Second by Heddins.
Okay, further discussion? If none, Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Claims are approved. We'll go on to consent agenda and as usual, we have several items listed. Are there any items that anybody wishes to pull for discussion? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda items as presented.
So moved by Heddins.
Second by Olson.
Okay, discussion? Hearing none, Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Consent is, agenda items are adopted. Next, public hearing items, there are none?
No, no. Oh yes, I'm sorry. Sorry, I thought you missed something, my apologies.
That's okay, we'll go on then to additional items. And item one is consideration of sending a budget amendment for publication for a public hearing on August 25th, 2020. Assistant Auditor Lisa Markley, are you on the, on the call? Let's wait a second. Lucy, I see you're on.
Can you hear me?
Now, yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. So it turns out I had to use my mute and then.
I had that trouble yesterday. That was, okay. So Lisa Markley, thank you. Would you, would you present the issue?
Yeah, you, this is fairly typical. We usually have to amend the budget early in the fiscal year to carry forward funds that weren't spent at the end of the last fiscal year. We're amending $5.3 million worth of expenses. 3.1 million of that is secondary roads funds that are going forward. Some from bond, excuse me, bond proceeds, some from just roadway construction that didn't finish. We are amending about $480,000 in the conservation budget that didn't get spent last year. The majority of that being construction on items that they're working on. We're moving forward. The rest of the story come that we haven't spent, which is 676,000. And we're moving forward, I want to say 251,000, I don't have that number right in front of me. A little over $251,000 worth of asset dollars that were not drawn down last fiscal year. That's the biggies. Do you have any questions on any of the expenses there?
No, I don't.
I don't have any questions either on it.
Okay, so the revenues that we're amending in are pretty, pretty limited at this point in time. Obviously we have to get farther into the fiscal year to see where the amendments need to be on revenues. There is some, about $251,000 worth of revenues going into conservation that did not get brought in last year that are part of the, the expenses that they're amending in also. You'll notice the, the $58,000 COVID federal grant is being amended in because we haven't seen any of those dollars yet. So at this point in time, it's only 350,000. Any questions?
No.
I have none.
I have none at this time either.
Okay, I did give you an ending fund balance projection for the end of the fiscal year, which is different obviously than what we budgeted. Those numbers are in front of you. We're looking at with this amendment, about a 28% general fund only ending fund balance. Of that, about 942 is not, is over and above the 25% that we typically like to have. What I'd like to do is send this to publication so that you can have a public hearing on August 25th for this amendment.
Lisa, this is Laura. And I just want to keep, say one more time of that 942,000. We are looking at roughly, in our minds, we've got about $300,000 held back, if you will, for possible insurance claims now that we've gone fully self-insured, that'd be additional. And then the treasurer has notified us that, or last time we heard at least, had notified us that there was still about $200,000 outstanding from Story County property taxes that hadn't been paid from this last payment cycle. So I just think it's good that we continue to reiterate that really of that money, we do feel there's about 500,000 that may not be available to take a look at unexpected or unbudgeted items, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
And you'll be refining that number as we go along.
Seems like I refine that number at the end of every month, Linda.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for Lisa Markley? If not, I would entertain a motion for sending a budget amendment for publication for a public hearing on August 25th.
At least, it's turned, go for it.
Yeah, I can't remember, so moved by Heddins.
Olson, second.
Further discussion? If not, Heddins?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Thank you very much. Now we will go on and we're back to Mike Cox. And he has item discussion and consideration of hiring freeze exemption request for conservation technician. Mike, would you explain this to us?
Sure, thank you again. So this is a position that has just been recently vacated, one of our conservation technicians at, out of our Hickory Grove office. We have two technicians over there, one of us, one of them left. Oh, I guess this spring and late, early summer to, for a family move. And this one is, is just left for another move to Northwest Iowa. At any rate, that leaves us with right now zero positions on our conservation technicians at Hickory Grove. So right now we are at our full-time staff, there is a park ranger. And, and that's it. So we'd like to move ahead and, and fill this second position. The board has previously approved filling the first position. And that is out for recruitment right now. We extended that recruitment date in, in the hope that you would approve this recruitment as well. So the second position and then we would just hire the, the two positions out of the same recruitment. So with that, the conservation board has, of course approves and recommends filling of these positions and hope that, hope that you feel the same.
So Mike, this is Lisa. So these aren't necessarily new positions, they're just fulfilling ones that people have left, as you said, have moved. And so you're needing to fulfill those positions, correct?
Correct, these are budgeted FTEs, they're not new. And yeah, they're just unexpected vacancies that we'd like to fill, correct?
And Mike, what's it been like at Hickory with the lake closed? I mean, some might assume that, that business was slow because the lake was drawn down. And but that, I've heard that's not the case at all.
No, it's not. You know, the, the lake, although the lake is drawn down, the park remains quite busy. And of course, this unit, the Hickory Grove unit takes care of, I'm going to say half of the county in addition to Hickory Grove Park, roughly our, our unit at McFarland takes care of the other half of our county parks. So, so they've been quite busy. And you've heard me say this before and, and it's, it's, I tell you what, it's such a nice position to be in. On one hand, that we have so many people out enjoying the parks this, this year. And so that's incredible. It really is, it's nice to see more people out enjoying our facilities. With that comes more work. With that comes more upkeep on the facilities. And so our workload is actually higher right now than it has been as a result of that increased visitation.
Any other questions for Mike about this request?
I have none. I'd be willing to go ahead and make the motion that we allow this hiring of the conservation technician for Hickory Grove as an exception to the hiring freeze.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? If not, Olson?
Aye.
Heddins?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We're, it's approved, thank you Mike.
Thank you all.
Next, we have Ethan Anderson, I believe, with a 28E agreement with the Story County Sheriff's Office for Law Enforcement for the city of Sheldon. Ethan, good morning.
Yes, good morning, good to see everybody. This is again, Story County stuff, so it's very unusual. We have the city of Sheldon that sits on the Tri-County border with Boone, Polk and Story. And it came to our attention last year that they were getting services from the Story County Sheriff and no one was paying for those services. But I think Sheldon kind of fell through the cracks between Boone and Polk and Story. And it came to the sheriff's attention because they wanted increased patrols and they wanted some more, some more services. And looking into it, realized there's no contract here to provide those services. One of the unique factors is we had to get an administrative order to allow people who may be arrested in Sheldon to be brought to Story County for initial appearance. So that's what you'll see attached there is the administrative order that got signed off by the judges in the District, in the second judicial district to allow that to happen. So now we're onto the 28E where Boone and Polk are recognizing that we're going to provide this service and Story County is going to charge for it like we would any other city in, in the county. So this is basically making sure that everyone's being treated fairly. It includes the citizens of Sheldon. And we'll be coming to the board with a contract to provide services for Sheldon like we have for the other cities in a week or two. So we need this 28E signed. Polk has signed it, Boone will be signing it next week. Once I have all the signatures, I'll get that filed with the Secretary of State and we're good to go. Like it says in the 28E, we can, we can end this at any time. We can amend this at any time with the other jurisdictions. But I think this is a good, good example of teamwork and really a willingness by the Story County Sheriff to step up and take responsibility for the safety and the patrol in Sheldon. You know, with Boone and Boone and Polk were happy to let us do it. And the sheriff's happy to step up and, and do it, so it's a good thing. I'll happy to take any questions.
Okay, does anybody have questions for Ethan?
I, I do, this is Laura, Ethan. So and it just related to the services that we, apparently we'd been providing previously, that apparently we didn't have all of the i's dotted, j's crossed, okay? So do you have any concerns or do we need in this contract that'll be coming to us to discuss about any liability concerns from the time when we were providing services without the contract?
No, so I think we look to generally Chapter 670 immunity for the county employees. And maybe there's different sections, not at the top of my head, I can't name them, but protecting sheriff's deputies in the line of their duties. So if they were in there, and again, let me provide the scope of the, the issue here. There's only a handful of arrests that take place in Sheldon every year.
Right.
So this is not going to be, you know, it's been about a nine-month process to get this thing in front of you, in front of the board. That was partially due to COVID, but also just because this wasn't really high on anyone's radar. Which it's important to people of Sheldon, it's very important that they have patrol. But no, I would think any situation that arose prior to the contract being in place would have established. would have established limitations to bring a claim, and we'd probably be at the end of any of those claims, because I can't, off the top of my head, identify any. I could get with Connie and the sheriff to see what, what concerns there might be. But I think we cross that bridge when we come to it, and we'd exercise the immunity under 670.
Great, I, I agree with you that it's wonderful that the sheriff did step up, because Sheldon is only what, three miles south of Slater or something like, like very close, and...
Yeah, looking at my map, yeah, it's, it's about 300 people.
Right.
South of, south of Kelly and south of...
Right, it's south of Slater, just down the road. But I just, so they really, good that they knew that they had someone who would be responding, so, yeah, okay, thank you.
It's much needed clarification.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion for approval of the 2080 agreement with the Story County Sheriff's Office.
They'll moved.
I would second.
Okay, Heddons?
Aye.
Olsen?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. 2080 is, is adopted, thank you.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, Ethan. So next, we'll go on to item four here, Legislative Proposal to the Iowa State Association of Counties to Strengthen the Master Matrix Scoring System for Evaluating CAFOs. I decided I would draft something for us to consider, I will probably submit it myself because any one person can submit, but I knew there was other interest with the other board members as well, so I drafted this for your consideration. And basically, it calls for strengthening of the master matrix. A lot of the material in it was from an Iowa Public Policy Project paper by James Merchant and David Osterberg in 2018. Margaret Janes, our Environmental Health Director, also helped with information for the last legislative session and her review. So I, basically, I'm planning on submitting this prior to the deadline, which I think is this Friday, and I just wanted to know if you wanted to, me to submit it on behalf of the entire board?
Oh, yeah, Linda, I thought it was a great job pulling it together. I had just, because I'm always the editor in me, okay? There was just one phrasing, a policy under number five. What is the suggested resolution? And the last sentence, which is kind of starts, these approaches are not inconsistent with each other, and just to me, that's a double negative, so I didn't know if you wanted to change that to these approaches are consistent with each other, okay? And then down there, and then down in item seven, the second, let's see, one, two, the third sentence, fourth sentence, I'm sorry, it starts, I have. So that was just related to if you want to submit it or not. So I certainly would, like I said, would make, I think it's, it's a great submission, well put together, very clear. And I would make that motion for that we endorse your submission of it, is that what you're kind of looking for, that, that you're still going to submit it as one person, but...
Still going to submit it, yes, but I just wanted to know if you wanted me to say on behalf of the Story County Board of Supervisors?
Okay, so that's the motion I would make, is that we ask you to submit this on behalf of the board, the Story County Board of Supervisors.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, any further discussion?
No, I guess I would just like to add, Linda, that I thought it was very well written, very detailed, and really laid out what the issues were and the proposals.
Okay, well, thank you, and there was a lot of help, and a lot of it, like I said, came from Iowa Policy Project, which did a very good job on this, so, so I might even, yes, should credit them probably. So, and, yeah, and I, I think this is something we've been through just recently, and we know that the master matrix is a flawed document, to say the very least. Early in 2019, our Story County Board joined several other counties in calling for the moratorium, so I think we just need to continue on because we know that what we do on the local level, we don't have much input, we can spend a whole lot of staff time, a whole lot of resources, and really get nowhere, and it needs to be legislative, needs to be legislative. So without, if there's no further discussion, let's see, we have a motion by Heddons?
Olsen.
Olsen, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, Olsen?
Aye.
Heddons?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. I will submit it, thank you very much. So then, we're moving on to department reports. We have a report submitted by Community Services. Is Carla on the phone, or on the line?
I am.
Good morning.
Morning.
Do you have anything to add to your report, or anything you'd like to highlight?
Um, I would just share, you know, since March, for our general assistance program, I believe I've mentioned it before, we have seen a decrease in the number of applications that we're receiving for like rent and utility assistance. I would say we averaged out for the year, as far as the number of individuals assisted per month, we, we averaged out okay there, I didn't see a big drop or change there. More so where I'm seeing the, the difference is in our referrals to other agencies, so where someone is not eligible for us, we refer them on, which, which I think is okay right now, rather than folks needing to, to work the process through us to get that referral to go on somewhere else, they're able to go right to that, that agency directly, and hopefully they're referring them back to us if they do see that they may be eligible with us. So that's something we'll, we'll continue to monitor, but definitely we've seen, I think we had about 290 less applications this year in comparison to last year. So we have seen a change there. Otherwise, just an update for the board, too, about the CARES Act dollars that the governor has passing on to regions. We are looking to receive about 3.2 million for CICS. Our administrative team met this morning, and we're talking about a couple of ideas that we're going to start off with right now, doing some outreach to schools to see if they have needs for MHDS support or related services, to see if we can do something there. Also looking internally at offices, some of the offices may need some additional PPE and that. And then also, there was another item, oh, looking at mini grants potentially for MHDS providers. So those are, are some of the initial things that we're looking at, and we're kind of stepping this out month by month, so I do anticipate there'll be some more ideas that come from that. Do you have any...
Yep, Carla, I have a question for you, and I asked this at the governing board meeting, so I don't know if you have any updated information on, do these CARE Act dollars impact the ending balance for the MHDS region? Do we, do we know yet?
No, we're trying to figure out yet, so if we had a budgeted item, do we need to use the, the MHDS, the budgeted MHDS funds to still pay for that? Or if it can be COVID-related, could we use the, the CARES Act dollars? So we're still trying to figure that out, Lisa. I do think, though, as Betsy mentioned, our, our expenditures are down just region-wide, so I think we're going to have an impact anyhow to our budget because of that.
Right, I understand that my concern is, just, is that going to impact us the next fiscal year with dollars? And that may need a, need to be a legislative change come January and stuff, but I just wasn't sure if you had gotten any further direction or clarification from the governor's office, and it looks like no, not yet.
No, we haven't. I believe Russell is meeting with Marissa Iansen with DHS either this week or next week, so hopefully, potentially, maybe he'll get some more information after that meeting.
Okay, great, thank you.
So a request for proposals, proposals for subacute services, you received no responses to that?
No, we did not. Since that RFP went out and after it closed, Mary Greeley has been having conversations, as you know, when they, when we renewed the lease with them for the CSTLC, Kristi Kraus mentioned that they're exploring subacute services to provide those services there rather than the crisis stabilization or transitional living center. Last week, she did update that she has met with DIA, and that's the entity that oversees subacute services. She had a, a very good conversation with them, and, and it appears that the transitional living center services that they're providing right now are very similar to subacute, so they may not need to do a lot of modifications to that in order to be able to meet that subacute criteria. Kristi's plan is to meet next with CICS administrative team, and then she'll need to put together a proposal to take to the Mary Greeley executives for consideration.
Seems like that's a really efficient way to do that, since the services are so similar.
Yeah, I think so, and, and subacute is Medicaid reimbursable, whereas right now the TLC service is completely regional funded.
Hope it works, sounds like a good solution.
Me too.
Thank you. Did you have anything else you wanted to report on?
Nope, I do not, thank you.
Are there any further questions for Carla?
Hey, good morning, Carla, it's Laura, and I just have a request, and that is, if you begin to see an increase in requests for rent and utility assistance, can you just give a heads up to Sandra and the board? And the reason I'm asking is that this is a discussion that the Story County Housing Trust Fund has, is watching very carefully about as, as we look at rental assistance through the Housing Trust Fund, there seems to be a lot of money out there right now because of the CARES Act. And so the discussion we're having back and forth is, when is that money going to run out, and they're going to start coming to us? Especially with the expiration of the extra $600 a week for unemployment, et cetera. So just a request, we get a heads up, or at least as soon as possible, so that we can track, I'll pass it on to Story County Housing Trust Fund, I'm sure like YSS and Salvation Army, who need money, who have some of that rental money, will be, you know, letting the trust fund know. In fact, Access, who was one of the grantees from that money for rent assistance through the Housing Trust Fund, went through their entire allotment, and we've passed on money, we've moved money from one grantee, if you will, under that, to back to Access. So just kind of want to make sure we're all, we all know about it, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Carla, thanks so much. And next item listed is other reports that we have none, and upcoming agenda items, do any of the supervisors want to comment or report on anything that's coming up for an agenda item?
The only thing is there, it depends on, the Board of Health is meeting this afternoon, if they have any recommendations, there may be from them, but their meeting will be this afternoon at 2 via Zoom as well.
And if they have a recommendation for us, we had discussed maybe having a special meeting this Friday, but I don't know if we have any other agenda items for Friday, what's the pleasure? Do we want to have, to tentatively still have a special meeting in, if we get something from them as a recommendation? Or do we want to wait till next Tuesday?
I think that the discussion today that the Board of Health will have, given kind of their discussion so far, that it sounds like there'll be some kind of recommendation coming out, but even if there isn't, I think to discuss, to kind of maybe formalize some of our questions, if we still have them for our county attorney, to ask, you know, what exactly are some of the ramifications, what is the law, some other people have come forward, other attorneys with other opinions, et cetera. So I think we should still schedule the meeting for Friday, and then we can always cancel it, but at least now, then we will have scheduled it, and you can provide notice, et cetera.
I, I'm fine with having a meeting Friday, the question is, I guess would be, is if there is something that comes out of the Board of Health meeting today, is there time to get anything on the agenda for Friday? Would we have enough time, or would we need to wait till Tuesday? That would be my only, my only question, I don't have a problem with having the meeting on Friday, but if we are going to do something, we've got very short time to have something on an agenda.
Well, that's kind of my, that's kind of my concern. And I don't know, because it's, it's got to be on Thursday by 9:00, we have to get it to Shelley, and this, it's going to be Tuesday late afternoon, and we have other meetings tomorrow, so I'm just not sure we'd have a final product by Friday.
I mean, we could do a tentative, and if, if we don't, then we do whatever on Tuesday, I mean, we could do it that way as well.
I, that's, that's, your reasoning is good about a couple, that really it's just, what, a day and a half extra for time to get stuff together on that? Okay, so your reasoning is fine there. Last time I looked at the Board of Health agenda, there was not any, any proposed letter or anything, it's just the two items listed there, right? There, there's nothing from the Board of Health, so, yeah, okay.
I think they do have something on their agenda.
They do, but, but an attachment.
Oh, right.
I mean, because that's what we're really talking about, is getting the attachments together so that maybe the public could look also, right? So I'm good, if you want to wait till Tuesday on that, that's fine.
I'm also thinking, and Ethan, you're on, on the phone, and what we're talking about is the issue of, of mandating, encouraging, requiring, whatever I want to say, face coverings. Do you, do you think, or do you have some more information for us on this that you would have Friday, or would Tuesday workers give you more time?
Yeah, I think I may all share some preliminary thoughts with Tim, I've been discussing. Friday, we could, we could be prepared to discuss this on Friday, if the board wants us to, yeah, we, we could do that.
Are you available Tuesday as well?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Right, so would you be, if we went to Tuesday, Ethan, would you be able to put some of those thoughts down on paper?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
No problem.
Then I'm up for Tuesday, I mean, that gives everybody a little, one more time.
So, I just, so I, just, and, and I'm fine with that, too, I just want to be clear, is, is there is something on the Board of Health, their, their letter or whatever, so if you're wanting to have, potentially, if they recommend something to the, to the supervisors to do a resolution, would there be then a resolution come Tuesday? Or is it hearing from Ethan and Tim on Tuesday?
I think, you know, that I felt that we've been going through this a long time, okay? We've asked questions, I think we've been asking questions of Ethan and Tim as it's been occurring, all right? So, so I think at least if we were to start working on something, depending on what our decisions are and what our options are, I, one of the things that I think I kind of passed along, I guess, was, you know, what are the other, what are some other county attorneys thinking about now that Johnson County has gone ahead and said, you know, hey, yeah, here's Johnson Board of Supervisors has done a resolution, but the Johnson County attorney is saying, oh, you guys don't have any authority? Well, you know, is it authority to issue a proclamation as opposed to authority to issue a resolution or an ordinance? So those are the kinds of questions, I guess, that will need answered as of Tuesday, and I guess we take it from there, Lisa, then if we do a resolution or whatever, I, I think, I think logically, then we go in another week. Does that sound right from a thought process?
That's what I was wondering, is are you wanting then to put it off for another week then, or were you wanting that information earlier for a Tuesday meeting, or potentially a different Friday meeting? I, I just want a clarification where we were going with that.
Here's a suggestion, we don't need to be in person in order to receive communication from our county attorney.
Correct.
Correct, so Ethan, if it's got it ready Friday, he could send us what he's got, and then if somebody wants to take, to try their hand at drafting a resolution to put on for next Tuesday, they could. I could, we could get it on as late as Monday, first... next Tuesday, they could. I could, we could get it on as late as Monday, first thing in the morning if we needed to.
Sure.
Does that work for everybody?
That would be fine. I'll start working on, like I said before, I'll start working on a draft then of a resolution based upon what Ethan sends me. Okay?
That's great.
Okay.
Sounds good.
So you'll have the Board of Health's information, you'll have Ethan's information, and you're stepping up to do the resolution.
I am, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
You have a plan. Okay. So, and the other upcoming, we will not meet this Friday then? Made that efficient. Thanks for the discussion. Other upcoming agenda items that anybody wants to comment on or bring up? Okay, then we will go on to public forum number two, comments from the public on items that are not on the agenda. And because of the open meetings law, we could not comment on them or could not act on them today, but might in the future. I'm looking, and I don't think that I see anyone with a hand up. Do you have anybody on a text, Laura?
Nobody on text.
Okay. And Leanne, tell me if you see, see a hand raised that I don't.
I don't see anyone.
Okay, thank you. Then I'll close public forum number two. I think I opened it. So anyway, it's closed. Then we'll go on to liaison assignments, committee meeting updates, and announcements from the supervisors. Who would like to go first?
I mean, I, sure. I have the, as I said, the Board of Health this afternoon. That's at two o'clock and it will be via Zoom. I have tomorrow on my calendar, I have the CCMT meeting. And then I'm also going to have, I'm on the boost, does not have their meeting till next week, but I'm this, I'm on the Subcommittee for the Finance Committee. So reviewing their year-end finances. So I will have that tomorrow morning as well. Thursday, it looks like we've got a couple of interviews for fulfilling positions on our planning and zoning. And then Friday, I had on for a tentative board meeting that I, we don't have, no longer having. So I'm sure that day will fill up, but it's a little flexible right at this particular, particular time. And then I do have, I'm just going to say since on Monday, the 10th, then will be the boost board meeting. It moved to the second Monday of the month instead of the second Tuesday. It moved last, last month. So I will have that on Monday evening.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Olson?
CCMT meeting. Also then on, we've got the jurisdictional meeting on Thursday night. And then we've got the interviews, starting the interview process for the several applicants that we got for both planning and zoning and Board of Adjustment. Thank you for that. And everybody passing the word along effort. And this is kind of the last week of the month, first week of the month, the next month, always kind of my downtime here. So I'm going to play catch-up.
Okay. In addition to several of the other meetings that have been mentioned, I have a test Iowa meeting at four o'clock today to hear progress on the clinic that we're going to have in Story County. And I have a Story County College Access Network meeting tomorrow and interviews and the jurisdictional conference, conference call. And Monday, I have a Conservation Board meeting, it looks like. So lots of meetings.
Yep, I just want to confirm with you both. We still have the virtual line with USDA tomorrow. Is that correct? Tomorrow morning?
Yes, at nine, right?
Right, right. Because I know the other one got changed from today to next week, I believe. So.
I had one o'clock for USDA. Is it nine?
No, there's a, I think, yeah, there's at least, Linda's right, there's another one. I was going to go check the whole list again.
Yeah, I'll have to relook, look again. They've changed some of them. So that may be correct.
So, yeah, we, we would have been in Washington DC this week had there not been COVID. So we're having the lions instead, the virtual meetings.
Yeah, I think it's one. I'll double check as well. Okay, any other announcements? If not, then I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved by Edens.
Okay. Edens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We're adjourned. Thank you very much, everybody.